The nature of partnerships, especially as we are moving towards the post 2015 development agenda. We note that some of the things that were done during this period need to be refocused and that partnerships revamped and revolutionized in order to take us to the threshold of sustainable development. When I reflect on what we have to do in the panel, a couple of very important studies come to mind. One is the WHO Commission on Macroeconomics and HIV, which was chaired by Jeffrey Sachs. And in that report, what he showed and which triggered a revolution in which we respond to health and development in this particular century was that macroeconomic development was really greatly linked with health outcomes and that the investment in health really is an investment largely in the reduction of poverty, the increase of equality among people, and an increase in economic welfare. And this was empirically illustrated in that commission's work. So that he was dealing with global partnerships and how, in fact, within that scenario, North-South and South-South partnerships were important. There was a second study, which was done and more parochially in the Americas, chaired by Sir George Aline, former director of Paho, in which his commission, the Caribbean Commission on Health and Development, really showed how small states require to do the same thing that large states do to increase their economic well-being by investing in health. But in fact, the strategy for the outcomes they require are somewhat different because they require, especially small states, greater, greater collaboration among themselves in what he described as a cooperation in health or functional cooperation in health. And so his idea about partnerships manifested themselves in some illustrations which came out of this panel. One was referred to by the delegate from Latin America, who really referred to the Caribbean's partnership of Caribbean Public Health Agency, merging five institutions into one, and public sector, private sector, civil society collaboration. So here on this panel this afternoon, I believe that we will take those indications of those two major reports that I have cited, and there are many more that I could have. But I think that the panelists this afternoon will take forward the notion of partnerships in very many different perspectives, and I think that you will have a really very fruitful engagement. I will stop now and then ask our first panelist. I don't know how she does it. She looks so calm, but she is one of the organizers of this program. Nuria Moha. She is the project coordinator of the South-South Global Exchange. But more importantly, I think that she has experience, even, you know, at her young age, working in the World Bank and various other international organizations, graduating from Stanford. But what struck me about her bio is that she collaborated with Peruvian president Alejandro Toledo in producing a book on development in Latin America. So it was with great interest that I want to listen to what you have to say and ask you to present.
Thank you very much, Dr. Green. I'm honored to be here with you today and have the opportunity to introduce the South-South Global Health Exchange and share some of the work that the UN Office for South-South Cooperation has been conducting in support of global health. I'll start with a brief overview of the UN Office for South-South Cooperation to then delve more deeply into the South-South Global Health Exchange platform. UNOS was established in 1978 by the UN General Assembly, and it has been a key advocate and facilitator of South-South and triangular cooperation within and outside of the UN system, in its capacity as a convener, knowledge broker, capacity builder, and communicator. An integral part of UNOSK is SSGHT, which is the South-South Global Assets and Technology Exchange, which is a global exchange platform that seeks to bring together public-private partnerships to disseminate sustainable development solutions. SSGHT has three key areas. One is food security, global health, and energy and environment. Today, I will focus specifically on global health, which takes us to the South-South Global Health Exchange platform. SSGHX was established in 2011 in partnership with the Pan American Health Organization and the WHO. And since then, it has been endorsed by the UN General Assembly as a sustainable business model. As we have seen before, this is an online platform that really seeks to facilitate the exchange of technology, knowledge, and financing through South-South and triangular cooperation because oftentimes, solutions that are developed in the South are more appropriate, adaptable, and affordable to other developing countries and emerging economies. SSGHX focuses on three main areas in support of MDGs IV, V, and VI, as well as the future Sustainable Development Goals. These areas are maternal and child health in support of the UN Secretary-General's Global Strategy for Women and Children's Health. The second one is the increasing threat and problematic related to noncommunicable diseases, and finally, the fight against HIV/AIDS. But how does this work? Through the online platform, users can upload development needs, or they can also post innovative health solutions. Later on, we work to help generate matches between the needs and the solutions that would later lead to the implementation and transfer of projects and initiatives through offline and on-the-ground services. In terms of matchmaking, the kind of solutions that are exchanged are technology, best practices, research, and funding. And all of these come from the public sector, private sector, civil society organizations, international organizations, and academia. And to give you a better idea of what kind of projects are posted on this platform, here are some concrete examples. The first is a firefly phototherapy for neonatal care that was designed for rural healthcare centers in order to treat Jandos Disease. The project included eight target countries in Asia and two in Africa. Another example is research and development to fight malnutrition, and this was an exchange between Senegal and China, which resulted in the implementation of a manufacturing plant in Senegal with the technical capacity of China. Other examples include strengthening the capacity of midwives and obstetric nurses, as well as emergency medical care in Latin America. And in terms of needs, an example of a request posted is an exchange for pediatric and medical teams between Israel and China. And all of this is supported by SSGHT existing on-the-ground network of 50-country centers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Nuria. I think that pointing out the connection between needs and solutions and how they trigger off the transfer of projects and knowledge is a very important lesson that we have learned from what you just said. And now let me turn the presentation to another interesting person here, Mr. Gary, or Miss Natalie Africa. Natalie is the Director for the Private Sector Engagement at the United Nations Foundation, and she has focused on the United Nations Secretary-General's Every Woman, Every Child movement. And this was a very, very dynamic program launched during the last UN General Assembly. But she has very interesting background experiences in the Business Call to Action, which was launched in 2008, hosted by the United Nations. And she was also involved in the International Finance Corporation's Gender Program. She served as a diplomat with the South African government and is a graduate of the International and Development Studies in Geneva. It is my pleasure to ask Natalie to address.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And I'd also like to start off by thanking the organizers for including us so that we can share our experience of Every Woman, Every Child as a multi-stakeholder partnership, which is now also focusing on South-South cooperation. So I'm very glad to be here. Thank you to all of you. So I'm going to first of all just highlight the importance, but the neglect that women and children's health has had in international development. You know, this afternoon, we've had several speakers referring to initiatives around children's health, women's health, but the truth is, there's been a paucity of resources. There has been insufficient investment that has gone into women and children's health over the years. And even though they were included as MDG IV and V in the Millennium Development Goals, there was a realization in 2010, 2010, that the world was not going to be able to achieve the targets for MDG IV and V with the current level of investment that was going into women and children's health. So the Global Strategy for Women and Children's Health is a document that was prepared by the international health community, and it was launched in September 2010 by the UN Secretary-General, and that gave birth to the movement that's now known as Every Woman, Every Child. And if you look at the slide, you'll see that it truly is a movement. At this point, we have over 300 partners from government, civil society, private sector. One of our private sector partners, he's sitting next to me, I'm very glad, Becton Dickinson. And we have been able to mobilize organizations from all over the world, from every sector, in Every Woman, Every Child. Over 400 commitments for action have been made. And up to date, over the four years, we have $45 billion in new funding that has been raised, of which $27 billion has now been dispersed. So the movement was a great acceleration towards helping to meet MDG IV and V. Despite that, we still have a long way to go. There's still a deficit in funding. There's still more action that needs to be taken, and of course, that's going to continue into the post-2015 agenda. But what I'm going to share with you now is how we've built Every Woman, Every Child in the four years. And the figure that you can see on this slide basically shows the different components that represent Every Woman, Every Child, at least some of them. For those of you in the back, you might not be able to see the writing in the smaller circles, but what it shows is some of the different elements that constitute the movement. So we have the Commission on Information and Accountability that was created to be able to provide accountability, transparency, measurement standards to the Every Woman, Every Child movement. We have the Commission on Life-saving Commodities, which basically identified and prescribed key drugs, treatments, interventions that are needed to save women and children's lives. We have the Family Planning Conference in 2012, which addressed another neglected aspect of MDG V, which is family planning, which is a big part of reducing maternal and child mortality. A Promise Renewed is the USAID initiative that supports the reduction of women and children's mortality. We have the Innovation Working Group of Every Woman, Every Child, which focuses specifically on innovations that can help achieve these results. We have the Every Newborn Action Plan that was launched in 2014, this year in June, and adopted by the member states of the World Health Assembly in Geneva. And that focuses particularly on the first month of a child's life, which is where a big part of children's deaths occur. And then in September this year, we announced a global financing facility, which is an effort to accelerate the funding for women and children's health beyond what we've already achieved. And the Global Financing Facility is supposed to be launched in July next year and will be housed at the World Bank. So as if that's not enough, in terms of building the multi-stakeholder movement, that is Every Woman, Every Child, we are also now trying to see how we can increase South-South cooperation within this multi-stakeholder movement. And that's what I'm going to talk about today and give you a few examples. So first of all, why South-South cooperation? Well, South-South cooperation provides new and growing sources of funding and development assistance. A lot of developing countries still need investment in local infrastructure. We know that buildings, transport, logistics, electricity, water are key in terms of achieving our health goals, and other developing countries are investing heavily in local infrastructure, and we can learn together. A third of global trade now is going across developing countries. China is Africa's largest trading partner. Those trade flows can and should include trade that involves medical resources. The expertise can be shared, expertise in terms of skills, technology transfer, local manufacturing, generic medicines, shared knowledge and understanding of local conditions and challenges. Developing countries understand each other. There are appropriate adaptive innovations from countries of the South that we can learn from, and we can learn from each other's success and build on that through trilateral cooperation. So a few examples I'm going to give in terms of where we're going. The partners in population and development are an alliance of 26 developing countries who are working together on reproductive health, population, and development. That's one integral way in which we are trying to advance South-South governmental cooperation in Every Woman, Every Child. This year, we launched Every Woman, Every Child in China, and we are building a multi-stakeholder network in China to be hosted by the China People's Association for Friendship with Foreign Countries. Our network will provide support to China's national health plans and promote South-South cooperation. And then some examples that I'm going to give, which include a lot of private sector involvement, are two coalitions that were created to combat child diarrhea in Nigeria and in India. In India alone, more than 200,000 children die every year of diarrhea. So we created two movements in India and in Nigeria in 2012, focused on combating child diarrhea by providing more treatment of zinc and oral rehydration salts. And these networks in the two countries, which are fed on each other and learned together as an example of South-South cooperation, have brought together governments, NGOs, funders such as the Gates Foundation, and they have also brought together a large number of private sector partners, from pharmaceutical companies to communication companies, who have helped to lead behavior change and create demand-led strategies. So those are two very successful examples that we'd like to take to other countries. And as my last slide, I just want to say, going forward, as we go into the post-2015 development agenda, we know that it's going to be an even broader, universal agenda, larger than the MDGs. We believe that continuing multi-stakeholder partnerships such as Every Woman, Every Child will be essential, and tapping into the South-South dimension is going to be a necessary ingredient for success, and we believe that it holds huge untapped potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Natalie. I think that the presentation to follow is one that is highly complementary to the multi-stakeholder emphasis as an aspect of South-South cooperation. And this is going to be done by Gary Cohen, who is the Executive Vice President of Boston Dixon &amp; Company. He's a global, it's a global medical technology company. But I think what is really more interesting, not only is he a member of the board of CDC, but he is the acting CEO of the GBC Health. Most important, I think, for Natalie is the fact that he really is co-chair of the UN Financing Health-Related MDGs, and recently, the UN Commission on Life-saving Commodities for Women and Children. Gary founded Together for Girls. In that respect, you can say that he's a ladies' man. But in more seriously, I think that he is an advocate, along with the multi-stakeholders, for against violence, children, and particularly sexual violence against girls. He, in doing so also, is a leader of the men's movement engaged in the idea of the elimination of violence against women and girls. He has degrees, BA and MA, from Rutgers, but his experience and his interests are really very critical to the discussions this afternoon. I turn you over to Gary.
Thank you, Dr. Green, for the very kind introduction and also the opportunity in this majestic room. I couldn't help but appreciate the setting that we're in for this meeting. So as Dr. Green laid out, I have a special privilege, and that privilege is to work across the sectors. I have a day job in the private sector, which I'm actually compensated for. At times, I might wonder why, but because of the privilege I have. But I also work in official capacities for international agencies, national agencies, and nonprofit organizations. And through those roles, work towards common goals of integrating across the sectors to be able to achieve global health impact where it's most needed in resource-limited settings and doing so at scale. And I think that's what really makes the involvement of the private sector so important, is the ability to bring this to scale. Simon Bland mentioned antiretroviral access and how access is now very widespread. It actually took longer than perhaps maybe the initial private sector response in keeping the prices too high wasn't what it needed to be, but it did get there with dramatic reduction in access through business models. I can use, outside of global health, the example of mobile phones, which are accessible pretty much everywhere in the world, even to the rural poor, also done through a business model. So I would say that taking things to scale, creating access to technology, and actually getting things done, the private sector has to be effective with operating efficiency because otherwise, we don't survive. We survive based on our efficiency. And I would suggest there's three methods of getting it done. One is through philanthropy, which people think about, donations. A second is through using the capabilities of the company through CSR, such as training capabilities would be an example. And the third has come to be known as shared value creation, where you have a business model that creates sustainable access, and there's really no limit to the scale if that can be done. And again, I would use the example of mobile phones as a really good example. BD, which as we call our company for short, works everywhere in the world. We have many examples of impact. I'm going to breeze through a few because we don't have much time, but we work in Africa, India, China, the Caribbean, Latin and South America, literally all over the world. And we've been experiencing South-to-South cooperation as well, including in the early days of the HIV and AIDS pandemic. Brazil was really one of the first countries to respond and expand access. I'll get there. I'm going to go quick through the slides. Brazil was the first company, country to respond, and China, when its Ministry of Health expressed interest in scaling access, we, BD, arranged the cooperation between the Chinese Ministry of Health and the Brazilian Ministry of Health. So I'm going to go, as I said, very quick. These are the areas that we get involved in. If you look at the outer boxes, they're most of the key interventions in global health, and inside the globe are the ways we do it. And because of time, I won't go through it in detail, but it's a very comprehensive approach, ranging from creating access to technologies to influencing national and international policies to public-private partnerships and product development partnerships. One example was expanded access for CD4 testing, which is a critical immune system test for people living with HIV and AIDS. In early 2000s, there was very little access where it was most needed. Working with the Clinton Foundation and other partners, we were able to expand that access pretty much university at low cost, including places like the Nimbani Home outside of Nairobi, which is an orphanage for HIV-infected children from birth to 18 years old, which today has one of the most sophisticated labs for testing the status of those children. We've been taking that further with PEPFAR to strengthen laboratory systems throughout Sub-Saharan Africa and also more recently in India, building laboratories towards global standards of accreditation so that they can care for or test for a range of diseases. And that was done, as I mentioned, as a partnership with PEPFAR, $20 million partnership, half-funded by PEPFAR, half by BD. In South America, there's many programs. One of them focuses on cervical cancer, which is the leading cause of cancer death among women and girls. In South America, we partnered with Cervicusco, which is a non-government organization with a goal of expanding screening access to 75,000 rural poor women, and that goal's already been 50% achieved. Today, we're also turning our focus to maternal and newborn mortality, working very much in partnership with Every Woman, Every Child, and particularly the Every Newborn Action Plan, based on a simple premise that the notion of innovation should be oriented towards bringing innovation to scale for people who need it most, a greater number of people, rather than just thinking about incremental innovation for those who already have access. And we're looking at a full range of interventions, going from the prenatal phase to birth to newborn. I'm sure you're familiar with the data on this, but in MDGs IV and V, the two areas that have really lagged have been newborn mortality and maternal mortality. There were 6.3 million under age five children who died in 2013. Almost half, 44%, were newborns, and that doesn't include 2.6 million stillborns, so over 5 million newborns and stillborns. And that's because they literally do not have access to the type of interventions that are available in the global north. And what we're working on is bringing those types of interventions at low cost, working with organizations or initiatives such as saving lives at birth, which is a wonderful means of stimulating innovation, sponsored by four governments and the Gates Foundation. The first product that's coming out of this collaboration, interestingly, comes from the global south. It's called the Odon Device. It's a means of assisting childbirth during prolonged troublesome second-stage labor, which accounts for about 10% of maternal mortality and as much as 24% of newborn mortality is associated with the phase of childbirth, the intrapartum phase of childbirth, where this device would be used. It would replace forceps or vacuum assist. This was actually invented by an automotive technician in Argentina who came up with the idea during a dream after seeing a YouTube video of a wine cork being removed from an empty wine bottle. It's quite literally a dream story. And the WHO brought this technology to BD at the World Economic Forum in Davos, and we agreed to engage in a collaborative relationship to develop it at scale. The organizations we're working with are very broad. Literally, every one of these organizations BD today is working in partnership with, and a number of our leaders, including myself, serve in official capacities such as board assignments or board chairs or other capacities with a number of these organizations. And I have to say, as a private sector leader, you know, one of the things we try to do is incorporate our life's work into our work-life. And people think of the business sector as being just driven for profit, and we do have to earn profit. That's what fuels our survival. But the purpose of that profit can be to transition it into doing good around the world, and that's what we're seeking to do in this circumstance in the area of global health. And we really do have a privilege of working with the world's finest agencies and partners to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, for illustrating the role of the private sector. And I forgot to mention that this company is pervasive. It's throughout the world. He is a vice president with a firm of 30,000 employees in 50 countries, so the impact is tremendous. Thank you for that exposition. And now we turn to Angela, Angela Trenton Embondi, who is a national of Guyana and a senior advisor at the UN AIDS New York Office. But she has wide work experience, mostly in the field of HIV/AIDS, in which she has worked for 28 years at the national levels in Tanzania and Malawi, at the regional level in the Caribbean as team leader for four years, and then at the global level with the UN AIDS headquarters in Geneva. She really focuses on political advocacy and high-level strategic negotiations and the building of partnerships among government and non-governmental agencies. Angela, let me ask you to address the group.
Thank you very much, Dr. Green, and I'm delighted to be here this evening with the other panelists to address you. Thank you to the organizations for inviting me, and thank you all for your presence. So I'm going to talk about UN AIDS work. So I'm going to talk about UNAIDS work and South-South cooperation. As many of you know, UNAIDS has a network of offices in developing countries and middle-income countries where HIV is a problem. And so learning across countries and region is a key strategy for us, and also promoting partnerships and working through partnerships is important. So we support very much South-South cooperation, and I'm going to just give you two examples of our work on South-South cooperation to show how South-South cooperation is playing a significant role in tackling inequalities with respect to access to HIV services, but also broader health services, and the critical role that emerging economies of China and India are playing. So first of all, the China-Africa cooperation in health. Now, our office in China is collaborating with other UN agencies, WHO, UNICEF, UNIDO, and UNFPA to support China-Africa cooperation in expanding access to essential medicines and health commodities in Africa, focusing on transferring technologies and local production. The key actors in this has been the Africa Group of Ambassadors, the Chinese Pharmaceutical Industry Chamber of Commerce, and international development partners such as the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and Civil Society. There's a study that has been conducted to show how this partnership would work, and there are recommendations that are going to be given shortly. Some of the actions that have already been done are having a database of pharmaceutical companies and thinking about how to strengthen a platform for information exchange between China and Africa. Now, one current platform for discussion is the International Roundtable on China-Africa Health Collaboration. And this is a platform that has happened yearly for four years, and UNAIDS Office in China has supported in 2012 and 2014. There was supposed to be a platform this year, but this was postponed to next year. So the platform is focusing on universal health coverage and looking at expanding access to medicine and health commodities, and also looking at the role of traditional medicine in health, in universal health coverage. Apart from this platform, there's another forum in which the UNAIDS Office is seeking to leverage. This is the Forum of China-Africa Cooperation. This is a political platform with heads of agency, with heads of states, and currently the focus is on trade and infrastructural investments. And the office in China with other partners are seeking to seek, to seeking to see how we can leverage this platform for global health and for health in Africa. From the standpoint that we cannot have economic development without helping people, so that the health of the Africans is a catalyst for development in Africa. So we know that there's a lot of private sector businesses in Africa. And so one thing that is being done is how to leverage this private sector for health, for health, looking at how to influence and engage in the businesses in terms of the corporate social responsibility. Obviously, this gives reputation capital, but it also makes economic sense. It makes economic sense for these companies to invest in the social sectors, in education, and in health. And this would be a good model for Chinese companies to follow. Our office in China with other agencies is also looking into how to strengthen health surveillance capacity in the continent and establishing an agency like CDC, Center for Disease Control for Health, for example. Now, moving from China to India, our office in Tanzania has been leveraging the India Network, the India Learning Network, or the BRIDGE project, to increase access to key populations in Tanzania, in Tanzania, those populations that have been left behind with respect to accessing HIV services. We know who these populations comprise of. They comprise of the female sex workers, people who are using drugs, men who have sex with men. And if you look at the statistics, you can see that these are populations that are being left behind because while the prevalence of HIV is going down in the general population, it's very high in these populations due to, you know, violence, stigma, and discrimination. So what our office has done in Tanzania is put up some money, seed money, to have expertise from India come to Tanzania to distill the lessons learned from the BRIDGE project, which has been very successful in controlling the epidemic in India. And this obviously needs to expand. Now, this shows the important role of civil society organizations, which they have been working with. The role of civil society in activism, in getting access to ARVs is well-known. And here, they have an important role to play in advocacy with the media, with the police, the judiciary, in addressing the violence against these key populations, which is preventing them from accessing services. And so, in conclusion, I would like to emphasize that South-South cooperation is a key strategy that we are using in terms of accessing HIV services, but broader services on essential medicines and health commodities, and that civil society is a key stakeholder that needs to be supported within the context of South-South cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. I think in the context of what she said, it's important that I reflect on the launching of a very significant report yesterday by UNAIDS, Closing the Gap. And closing the gap really would depend a lot on some of the initiatives that Angela referred to, in particular, the BRIDGE, the BRIDGE project. But we will probably hear more of that in the Q and E time. And now we turn to Jan Olav Baroy. He is the deputy director of FK Norway, an anthropologist by profession. And in fact, he worked as program director of CARE Norway, and before that, with UNICEF in Uganda, in New York, Tanzania, and in the fields of emergency, child protection, health monitoring and evaluation. I can see that this is a good segue from what we heard before about partnerships to what he will present now.
Thank you, Dr. Green and all protocols. Very short, before I start with our solution, FK Norway stands for Fredskorps, Peace Corps. So that's the, that's the starting point. We are a Norwegian governmental agency under the Minister of Foreign Affairs and are facilitating the exchange of people between organizations and institutions. At any point in time, there is about 650 people in the world facilitated by FK Norway, young professionals and volunteers in the sectors of health, education, civil society, and private sector. And today, I'm going to focus on health. Before I hit the two examples, there is a few principles. One of them is reciprocal exchange. If Angela's organization would like to exchange with Chioma's institution, both are sending and receiving. No one is too small not to teach, and no one is not too big to learn, as Maria said. And this is, this is a fundamental principle of ours. And also, we have program lines between agencies and organizations only in the south, but also between southern countries and Norway, and also triangular programs. And last but not least, in order to learn and to exchange, everyone has to be in a partnership. I am respecting the other organizations, and they do respect each other in order to learn and in order to provide. Two examples. The first one is three health centers in Kenya, Malawi, and Zambia, down to the earth with health personnel whom are exchanging people between their health institutions. Since 2005, almost 50 people have been on exchange. And what do they do? These are medical doctors, nurses, and also administrative people who are traveling from the health center in Kenya to the collaborating health center in Zambia, bringing skills, bringing knowledge, and coming back after 12 months on exchange, inspired, providing new skills to the health center, and providing new energy in the local society while showing that there is an international focus on this particular village and this particular society. For many of these people, this is the first time ever to travel abroad, and due to the support from FK Norway and due to the partnership, they are bringing new inspirations back to their people. The second example I would like to give you tonight is a larger example between Cambodia, Tanzania, Malawi, and Norway. It started in 2010 between the School of Prosthetics and Orthotics in Phnom Penh, Cambodia, and the same school in Oslo. Close to 50 people has also been on exchange for these, the past four years. And what are the institutional results we have discovered in this project? That is a higher motivation of staff. In Cambodia, there's no, only Cambodian teachers teaching at the university there. They have, they have reported on a higher number of other institutions in the region being interested in Cambodia and this particular school. In Tanzania, they are reporting that now we are able to issue certificates, we are approved certificates by the international society in order to give students the right education. So everyone is, and in Norway, we are also benefiting from having students from Cambodia in Norway and Norwegian teachers in Cambodia, learning the basic skills. And this, this triangular partnership has brought in higher engagement at the school in Norway and in those three other schools. A few conclusions. Without any very clear focus on the participants, the volunteer, the young professional's well-being, we aren't able to provide institutional results. We have to make sure that the one-on-exchange are properly trained, they have proper safety and housing and in the, in the exchange, and that they're coming back with some skills they can bring to their people in the institution at home. The human capital, the change agents have been on exchange for 12 months and are coming back with an engagement and with a perspective which do last longer than the exchange. So we do call for the change agents, and they are benefiting their society and their schools. And last but not least, again, without a reciprocal exchange, we will never learn as much as we do today. We do see that everyone in the partnership do learn, but it takes some time to build out that confidence that everyone can provide and everyone can learn, and this is the equal partnership we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you very much for helping us to understand human capital and capacity building. And we want to move quickly to our last panelist, Chioma Una Kuga. She's a member of the Resource Mobilization Team of the African Development Bank, and she has quite a lot of skills in the areas of resource mobilization and management of technical cooperation, trust funds, and partnerships with other multilateral development banks. She holds a master's degree with specialization in commerce, commercial and corporate law from the University of London, and also a master's in international law and diplomacy. And I think she is well-qualified to end this session because we can't, we can't deal with South-South cooperation unless we talk about financial sustainability. So, Chioma, over to you.
Thank you very much. We really thank the organizers of this event. The African Development Bank is happy to be, to feature on the panels, and we hope that in future we'll do some more. Since we do not have a lot of time, I've been asked to make a presentation on the bank's experience in mobilizing funds for the health sector, or health projects in Africa. When you hear about, when African countries hear the African Development Bank, there's a tendency for each country to think that the institution is the solution to every development problem. But then, when we, when we come down to resources, the resources are scarce. So we thought first to, this first slide is really to just give an overview of the ADBs, we call it ADB, but in an international forum like this, we'd add AFDB because of the Asian Development Bank. The ADB resource window, we do have what we call the African Development Bank window, which is the non-concessional financing window, and the authorized capital for that is over $100 billion. We have the African Development Fund, which is the concessional window, and this is replenished every three years from its inception in 1972 to date. We're at the 13th replenishment, and we have a total, we've mobilized a total of $35 billion for that. And then we have a third window, which is the Nigeria Trust Fund, which was set up by the Nigerian government in 1976. The total resources under that is a little over $240 million. And then these we call the statutory resources. And then the non-statutory, we also do co-financing with other development agencies, and both bilateral and multilateral. We do have technical cooperation funds. The cumulative amount under that is over $1 billion. And we do have one
Yes.
Trust fund that is called the South-South Cooperation Trust Fund, and narrowed down to what that fund has financed in terms of health. And then we have bilateral and multilateral funds and technical assistance. Now, because of, because Africa's development needs are huge, and these resources that you see cannot address all of them. So the bank periodically defines its strategy, and these strategies really are defined in consultation with governments. Sessions, earlier sessions have alluded to the fact that governments need to drive their own development agenda. We also need, they need to own whatever it is that's happening. So to define the strategy, the bank consulted a great deal with the government. And then there was the conclusion that, okay, the bank should intervene in, we concluded that, okay, the two main objectives of the bank would be inclusive growth and then transition to green growth. There was a lot of discussion on transition to green growth. Some board members wanted it to be green growth, but then others Some board members wanted it to be green growth, but then others were of the view that Africa is still at that stage where it's transitioning, so we'll be supporting the government in terms of their transition to green growth. And this strategy would focus on five operational priorities: infrastructure, regional integration, private sector development, governance, and accountability. And then, of course, skills and technology. During the consultation, and I saw that in the presentation from Angola, there was a lot of discussions about the need for skills development. So the bank decided that rather than just select one social sector, the focus... One of the focus areas would be skills and technology, and this, of course, has to do with human capital. And of course, then, we also then thought that discussions have touched on fragile states, food security, gender. These three areas also would be areas of special emphasis for the bank in each of its operations. I'm sure you're wondering, where is health here? Well, in the consultation with the government, we found that... And from the presentations in the last three days, we found that governments do have resources to actually take care of their health issues. And then also, there's a lot of bilateral cooperations between the governments and the donor community, and then, of course, the South-South Cooperation. There's a lot going on there. And they were of the view that if the skills, internal skills can be developed, then they can take care of the health issues. And with the scarce resources, the bank did not identify health specifically as an area of focus. Now, cumulative funding, you see the figures. One point here is that the approvals in 2013, the bank's total approval for, in terms of lending and grants, was over $6 billion. 9.4% of that was for the social sector. But then, when we narrow it down to the health sector, there was only just 2% of the total approval for 2013. And this particular funding went to Morocco, and it was really... It wasn't for health project per se. It was a budget support to Morocco's health reform program. So the bank doesn't directly get involved. But then, it is all changing now with the advent of Ebola, because as soon as Ebola broke out, the president of our institution was consulted, and he had to even go to a number of the countries and all. So where actually now, mobilizing funds, the bank has, between the time the Ebola broke out earlier this year and now, a total of $160 million has been earmarked for nine countries, including the three, Guinea, Liberia, and Sierra Leone. And the South-South Cooperation Trust Fund that I mentioned earlier is also providing... This fund, by the way, is coming from Brazil. We hope to mobilize more funds from other South countries like China, India, and even the African countries like Nigeria, we're encouraging them to provide some funding. We're also encouraging South Africa to provide some funding. And we're now trying to build a pipeline of whole health projects. We cannot totally ignore health. And then, we're setting up certain trust funds, issuing some capital market... I mean, conducting some capital markets issuances. But the pressure is on our institution to mobilize funds. Everywhere we turn, people say, we want funds. And we're also under pressure. So they turn to us for funds, we turn to donors for funds. So we're also just out here, out there, looking for funds. We're approaching emerging donors through the South-South Cooperation. We're approaching private sector and all. And I see my time is up, and this is where I stop. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chioma. We have a very short window now for questions, so we probably can take about two, maybe three. But if you make it brief. One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Very educational session. Anywho, I'm very grateful for the experience of our colleagues here. Teva Pharmaceutical Industries is the leader in generic medicines. One in every five prescriptions in the United States is a Teva prescription, just to give the magnitude. And I would like to actually address my question and comment to my colleague from the private sector, Mr. Cohen. The question is, you mentioned three ways of actually engaging in global public health. We are actually considering a fourth one. And my position is based within the R&amp;D arm of Teva. And the intention, to which I would like to hear your view, is actually to be solution-driven. And so it's not just innovation. I do want to use the word "solution-driven," and to ask you if that's not a fourth possibility. And lastly, you've shown a slide with many stakeholders in which your company is engaged with, but I haven't seen there any other private sector company on the list. What are the barriers for private sector to collaborate within itself in order to achieve some of the goals that were outlined? Thank you.
We may be able to take another question. Yes, this gentleman here.
My name is David Elward. I help run the global health and nutrition programs at Oshoka. And first, I don't know any of you personally, but I know your organizations, and I want to thank you for what you do. Norway has been unbelievably a leader in this field, and Gary, your company, has just done wonderful things, and the others as well. And I used to work at the UN Foundation. But anyway, my question is, having achieved the highest per capita expenditure of money on health in the world, the United States is concluding that maybe we could invest our money better. So South-South is a really good thing to do, because you don't want our example being used in the... The conclusion is that we need to focus on well-being, not set up profitable sick-care systems. So far, everybody on the panel has been quite understandably addressing how we care for people who are sick. But no one has talked about nutrition, about well-being, about management of chronic disease. So... And we need to transition there fast, or we're going to be overwhelmed by the number of people with diabetes and so on. I just wondered if some of you might address that.
Thank you. One last question, the lady at the back there.
Thank you very much. Hadla Thosensoty from Small Globe and the University of Toronto. This has been excellent presentation on very interesting initiative, all involving some triangular cooperation and multi-staker involvement. My question is, is there some mechanism in place in those multi-staker involvement to make sure that the least developed countries have influences on the prioritization and are active participation in the prioritization process of the efforts that are planned? And is there a scope for organizations such as UN organizations to actually help train negotiation capabilities in countries that are least developed and small countries? Thank you very much.
We have now two minutes left, and I have to ask the panel to try and negotiate those two minutes. Anyone could answer the three questions, or two or three can answer the three questions in two minutes.
Well, maybe I'll jump in, because the first question, I'll try to take it, no more than 30 seconds. So I think the idea of solutions, first of all, we know Teva well. The idea of solutions is an enabler to the three areas that I mentioned of creating shared value, corporate social responsibility, and philanthropy, maybe a semantics thing. But that methodology, we believe, is the right methodology. Identify needs, identify solutions. Coincidentally, it's the methodology that the Global South to South Partnership is using. So I think there's a lot of synergy here. We do engage in private-private collaboration. One example is a collaboration with Pfizer to introduce Sonya Press in a pre-filled, low-cost injectable form that's used for reproductive health. I just didn't have it on the chart, but there are those collaborations. Also, on the point of prevention or wellness, Together for Girls, which I founded, was specifically founded because of the high HIV prevalence rates among girls and young women, just off the charts relative even to boys and young men due to societal practices of sexual violence. It was founded on the basis of human rights, but also on the basis of preventing spread of HIV and AIDS.
I'll just jump in on the issue of well-being. I think you're right, and in fact, the work that we're doing, even in every room and every child, is focusing increasingly on what we call social determinants of health, which is bringing in aspects like nutrition and sanitation and education, because those all contribute to health outcomes. And so having a linear view in terms of, you know, curing, whereas you're not preventing by making sure the other elements are taken care of, is in fact not sustainable. So we are increasingly spreading out. And as we look at the post-2015 Sustainable Development Goals, we're looking at actually how health is applicable across all those goals.
To the question about the LDC countries, yes, FK Norway, we do give priority to the least developed countries. And I think it's a matter of prioritization and just do it. And tomorrow at 11 o'clock, we have a mini-forum, where we're going to have one and a half hour about the system of FK Norway. So you're most welcome, all of you.
Angela.
Yes. And in terms of, again, the LDCs and really ensuring that we are involving countries in deciding what they want from us, I think it's very important for us to be strategic and insured, and we are adding value and really find out what is it that we can bring to the table that is of value and interest to countries. And secondly, with respect to chronic diseases like diabetes and hypertension, we are looking at how the experience and the gains from HIV, we can bring that to bear on managing these diseases. Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, the panelists have been really eloquent. I have no time to make a summary, because I think we are out of time. But I just wanted to say one thing, one thing, that I believe that as we move forward and we conceive of the post-2015 era, we have to conceive of health where I think I started in the introduction. Health as a very critical component of development. And I feel very saddened when I hear the... When I hear the African Development Bank contributing 2% before they are jolted by Ebola. When I see that the World Bank had to be jolted again by Ebola to revive their contribution to health. Health and global wellness is important. And I just want to close by saying, we have to deal with prevention, as the gentleman rightly said. But I think we have to take bold steps for investment in global health to protect the voiceless, the vulnerable. And those people, those girls that Natalie spoke about and that Gary works with her to deal with, those people, without whose investment inequalities will persist, and health and development will suffer. I want to thank the panelists, Nuria, Natalie, Gary, Angela, Jan, and Chioma. Please put your hands together. Oh, and let me now call on Mariana for the closing. Is it Mariana?
Before we officially close the session, we would like to thank the panel for a very impressive and dynamic... But we would like to also call our director and the UN Secretary General to be with us on the floor. The UN Office for South-South Cooperation presents a plaque to each panelist in recognition of your special contribution, Salsa and Jandek Cooperation. Presenting each plaque, of course, our director and head of the UN Secretary General, Mr. Yves Buzo. As your name is called, I ask each panelist to join our director on the floor in front of the desk to receive your plaque. Number one, James Fitzgerald. Oh, sorry. Final one.
This is beautiful. Thank you.
Mariana Faria. Thank you very much, audience. We would like to invite everyone now to Plaza Steka for the final reception. May we call on Mariana to do the final closing.
Thank you very much. I promise I won't be long, so everybody can enjoy the cocktail. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would like to congratulate the UN Office for South-South Cooperation and their devoted team, who I know and admire very much, for this successful event, and especially for organizing this session on global health. Although, we have heard about health during this whole two days from all the eight scale-up sessions. We can comment about the care when we are hearing about the first session on Ebola, or medicine joint purchase in the fifth session, or, as the gentleman has said before, on promotion or well-being when we heard about food access, or child... Eradicating child work or green energy. Well, the Global South is composed by a range of very different countries. We are different in the size of our economies and territories. We are different in our location in the globe, in our culture, in our language. So what does bring us together? The Global South countries are developing countries, not because of their economical development. We are developing countries because we are working hard on reducing our inequities, because we are developing our social protection systems to generate social justice for our citizens. And health inequities are faced by all of us, Global South countries. We all struggle with a triple burden of disease, transmissible, and many times neglect... We all struggle with a triple burden of disease, transmissible, and many times neglected diseases, the NCDs, and the combined effects of injury and violence. As a complex subject, health cannot be achieved through simple answers. It is necessary a systemic and multisectorial approach. In December two thousand and twelve, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution that emphasized health as an essential element of development. We have heard this here. Less than a year later, the Eighth Global Conference on Health Promotion held in Helsinki stated that health for all is a major societal goal of governments and a covert, a cornerstone of sustainable development. It is necessary to strengthen national health systems and the governance capacity and leadership of ministers of health so they are able to guarantee the right of health understood and its integrity, promotion, prevention, and care. And it is as important to involve other governmental sectors as well as civil society and the private sector, as said earlier by Mr. Simon Bland and in the table, with the presence of the private sector. Yesterday, in the first scale-up session, I heard that Ebola does not know borders because of the families in Africa that live in different countries and do cross the borders. But the reality is that in a globalized world such ours, diseases do not know borders. To summarize, why South-South Cooperation in health? One, because there won't be sustainable development without health. Two, because we live in a globalized world, and as said, diseases do not know borders. And three, because health inequities affect us all as Global South countries. I would like to leave you with a thought. It is not enough to take care of our own garden anymore. We have to cooperate so everybody has access to health, because global health is as strong as its weakest link. I would like to invite you, on behalf of the UNOSC and all the co-chairs of this session, to join us at the reception downstairs at the atrium. Thank you very much and have a nice night.